And everyone, notice hereby given that City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas, will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on April 5th, 2022, in the City Council Chambers at 803 West Holland Avenue in the City of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, Government Code, Section 551.043, Public Notice. The use of cellular phones and electronic equipment is prohibited in the City Council Chambers during meetings of the City Council, except for purposes explicitly authorized by the state law, by the law, state law, Texas Government Code, Section 551023. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the official rules of decorum, but the City Council meetings available at www.cityofalpine.com decorum. Public comments are limited on the agenda. Public comments are limited to agenda items only. Individuals who wish to address the City Council may do so by completing the public comment card and by placing a completed card of this on the city secretary's desk no later than five minutes before commencement of the meeting. The public comment card may also be completed online at www.cityofalpine.com/councilcomments. A public comment card is not required for speakers who wish to comment on public items. When speakers are acknowledged, please approach the microphone at the podium and state your name and word for the record. Public comments are limited to a total of three minutes per person, and a bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. Please conclude the speaker's comment promptly when the bell rings. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule that topic for future discussion or refer the matter to state. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call a point of order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. All the speakers, please stand for the pledge. Thank you. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, all council members are present here today. The notice of this meeting was posted by 2:00 PM on April 1st.
Okay, thank you. Public comments, anybody? No public comments, okay. We want to presentations, recognitions, and proclamations, and I have two. Okay, I have a proclamation here. Where a thousand times each year, the underground infrastructure in Texas is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and effect to the public and safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communication Commission designated 811 to provide excavators and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended site. And whereas the Damage Prevention Council of Texas, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground facilities in all 254 Texas counties, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, persons living and working in the City of Alpine, Brewster County, and Fort Davis, Jeff Davis County can save time and money and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, I am the best office manager of Alpine, Texas, on behalf of the City of Alpine and the Damage Prevention Council of Texas, the month of April 2022, as Alpine's Safe Digging Month, and encourage excavators and homeowners throughout the City of Alpine and Brewster County to always call 811 after digging. Safe digging is no accident. In witness whereof, I had here on to set my hand this 5th day of April in the year 2022, the best office manager.
We want to get a picture, Randy.
We have one more. Whereas in Texas Public Safety Commandment Act, as our unseen first responders serving our communities in health and state lives every day, and whereas these professionals, which include the 911 operators, dispatchers, and other highly trained communication specialists, answer calls for help and address the emergency needs of callers according to the specific challenges raised by any given emergency. And whereas the process, the situation is fondly responding rapidly and often creatively to assure frightened, upset, and confused callers while at the same time maintain the calm, professional, and disciplined demeanor that handling an emergency 911 call requires. And whereas public safety telecommunications have remained unwavering in their dedication to providing essential service to the City of Alpine residents and in need, always adopted to evolve emergency response field. And whereas the City of Alpine is well equipped with the best professionals who can provide critical assistance for residents in times of emergency. And whereas the real council, real Randy, Council of Government has worked with telecommunications to ensure the City of Alpine have reliable access to emergent technology services. And whereas every year, Texas dedicates a week in April for an awareness campaign which highlights the many contributions and achievements of public safety to telecommunications and their importance to the public safety framework of the Lone Star State. Now therefore, I am the best office manager of Alpine, Texas, on behalf of the committee, hereby recognize April 10 through 16, 2022, as Public Safety Telecommunication Week. And Alpine, Texas urges appropriate recognition for a witness where I have under my hand this 5th day of April in the year 2022, the best office manager. Who's this?
You have almost all of the dispatchers here.
I don't want to step forward.
I'll introduce it real quick. We got the supervisors, Alex Hamid, y'all met her last meeting. Sadie Portillo, Will Romero, and the back of Dominic Rubio. And then we have our new guy, Andrew Pierce. And we have our night shift guy, I figure he's still asleep. He's got night shift, so. And then we got two others that work part-time that aren't here right now. But these are the, these are the core of it.
And I might add also, in Alpine, we've got the state of the art 911 system. Am I not correct? In the country, not the world. And that just came into being, what, two months ago or so?
In February.
In February, so we're up downtown.
A good group photo.
Okay, I don't have a report, city attorney?
I'd like to have it for Council on the 19th.
Okay, good.
It may be necessary to have a called meeting just to finalize it. That deadline is coming up fast.
Okay. Very good. Okay, good. Now, the contract, that's going to be a joint contract between the city and the county.
For the city and the county. The city and the county will have to approve it. Contract itself will become the interlocal agreement contract itself, set forth what the city's rights and duties and obligations are actually are.
Okay, and these folks can take over immediately once a contract is signed or when Greg Hennington pulls out?
Yes.
Yes.
The 30th.
We're all, we're all, it's tied, we're all the same, same deadline.
Yeah. Okay, well, y'all have done a great job in working this out. It's essential that we do have a net good ambulance service for the City of Alpine and the Alpine areas. And hopefully, this will meet our needs. Okay. Very good, sir, thank you. City manager report.
Okay, some city updates. We had one extra proclamation that unfortunately didn't make it into our packets. The week of April 10 through the 16th is National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. It is the second week of April every year. This is another unsung hero, a group you don't hear as much about unless you have that one dog that just will not stay in your yard. They go beyond, and I like how the national organization kind of explains it. It's a week of appreciation designed to give recognition to the hardworking men and women of animal care and control who risk their lives and devote huge amounts of personal time and resources while they serve the public like other public safety and law enforcement agencies and paired with the same duties. And it encompasses not only our animal control, but if you think about it, also our animal humane society. But it's really important, these individuals, and these are your ACO officers and the pitchers, they invest a lot of their own time and resources in what they do. It's not an easy job when you have to remove pets, especially in hoarding cases. When you have to put animals down, I personally could never work for animal control because I would be a hoarder. I would have all the animals, and I would not want to put anyone down. They take it day to day and come across those. It's not just the animals, but the people as well. So I really wanted to get them involved today and get a shout out to them because it's important. So when you see one driving around, just make sure to thank them. The second week of April is dedicated to them. She emailed me Friday, we'd already done packets, so I couldn't get that proclamation in there. But the city is very thankful for them and everything they do. I know our animal advisory board is very thankful for Jennifer. And I just think it's important that we start recognizing all of our different organizations within our city and our groups. So a big shout out to them, and hopefully we'll get another ACO hired so they could be present tonight. They're filling in for everyone. And this is just a little utility update. At one of the prior meetings on the 15th, we talked about the gas utility and some of the issues that had been brought up. We did get ahold of our software for the online billing. It had not been made very public that we had issues. More and more people started to come forward. We have what they called a custom-created posting. A little bit odd for me when it comes to finance. If you make a payment, it should deduct, not add to your bill. But because of apparently how we report things, it was custom-designed, so they had to go in and actually change our customs so that when you look at an online billing, it's not messing up what you owe compared to what you. So like your, your month bill and your total were totally different amounts. One was higher, so we've requested the software company to correct that posting difference. As of today, the online billing is still incorrect. They are reconfiguring what they call our customs so that this next billing, when it gets posted online, it does reflect the current. So what you're getting charged for the month, what you have to pay, and if you pay late, all match. It's not these odd numbers that, why am I paying more than what I'm being charged? That's all being corrected. We're also looking at our paper billing. The gas paper billing in the last discussion had the different categories as far as the billing period, the meter reading period. This is a custom document as well. It's customized to allow us to go in and update portions of information, like you know, what you're being charged per CF, what your call numbers, you can call back. So we can remove the one odd billing date that doesn't match the meter read date. And so the software company is working with us. All of our information is in their cloud. Prior, we had the ability on the custom side, on our side, to kind of go in and configure. So they're helping us to get that so that the meter date, read dates, and the usage are only included in the actual invoice. So that will get updated. The water billing, it was, it was a nice relief to get a lot of positive phone calls this month. And this was the first month that we did it. We have made some internal changes with the customer service, a little restructuring and additional education and training. We still have a fairly new team. And the first month went out. I know Friday, April 1st, I thought it was a deeper fool's joke because I got both my water bills. So it was kind of like, what? They got it done, they got them printed, they got them mailed out. We had reached out to the post office in hopes that there was this loophole. I know Gio had looked into it as well, where they don't send our local invoices to El Paso, but unfortunately, we didn't, we don't meet those criteria. But it was nice to see that the bills were delivered the first and second of the month and not the 15th of the month. Our late notices will also go out paper in-house. We have ordered pink paper to reflect that it's a late notice, and they'll be in the white envelopes. We do want the public very well aware that if you make your payment on the 11th, you're still going to get a late notice because we print them that morning and payments don't get posted. So we really encourage people now that those are getting there earlier to get in, and of course, there's always, you know, pick up the phone, check on our website. And we're encouraging our staff to also have that conversation with the public, what's the capabilities for online? You can still receive your, your invoices via email. You can pay online. The service fee that's charged online is not from the city. That is from the company that we use for online payment services. It's their convenience fee, it's not a city convenience fee. I know some people have brought that up, but it's not our convenience fee. So we're excited, the girls were really happy. Some people were a little in shock, like, what is this blue envelope? But we're just glad they came in and asked that it is their utility bills. I'm a big shout out because Daryl's going to be really busy on Saturday. We do have our city auction. And we have a plethora of vehicles to choose from. We hope that people who purchase them don't turn them into junk vehicles because we don't want to collect them back. But we do encourage people who want just an everyday run-of-the-mill kind of car, this beautiful red Firebird. We do have a duly. There are a lot of work trucks. We did have to pull the tractor, we were unable to get the title for it, so the tractor is not up for sale. It is this Saturday at 9:00 AM. It's located at what the city calls 15 Acres, which is right beside the recycling center, also off of Cemetery Road. This is a cash checks, money orders only. We do not accept credit cards at this time. And you get to leave with the title in hand, and it is as-is. There is no trade-ins or give-backs. They are all as-is. So make sure to get out there early, check them over, ask questions. Daryl has a ton more than we do, but there's, there's a good selection of vehicles. So we're excited. We did invest a bit more in the advertising to ensure that we've brought in bigger crowds so that we could get these taken care of. And then the vehicles that don't sell will be salvaged. We're trying to not hoard, who want to come house, gives Daryl a little bit more room for his impound vehicles.
Sheriff Ronnie Dawson will be the object here, so.
No doubt.
And this next slide, and I gave counsel the presentation packets. The TechSod has been very busy with public hearings, both in-person and virtual. So we're part of what is considered the El Paso District. And they put together a plan, typically three to five years, of the projects that they're going to complete within that time period and how it affects each of the counties within the district. So Brewster County is part of the El Paso District, and we have several scheduled events, projects. These aren't all fully authorized yet or approved. The first step is getting all that public comment and feedback from them. I thought it was important to share, I know Ms. Doakes was at the meeting. It was really, you know, insightful, we actually got to learn quite a bit. Brewster County, and you know, I didn't realize TechSod took care of part of Black Gap roads. So TechSod will be making some improvements on one of the Black Gap roads. And they're not paving it, but they're going in and kind of redoing the collegiate that's out there, make it a little bit safer, more drivable. The big portion for Brewster County will deal with 118, Highway 67 and 90. So much like you see here where they came in and then redid both of the oneways for 90, they'll be continuing to work going towards Fort Davis and then going towards Big Ben, thank you, and towards Marfa, there's, there's a big section in that area. The important part of this with the public feedback is to get an understanding of what the community feels is important. Of course, they do address the main, you know, thoroughways within our city, but they address all of the other counties as well. So it gives you an idea of what's going on in Presidio County. They're going to be redoing the bridge that was burnt down for the train to get into Mexico, it's a big project. It also addresses portions of the big Highway 67 plan. One of the big sections for the Alpine area was to have the bypass around the city for heavy trucks. That is not in their current plan, but you can see little pieces of it that are as they look at other regions of the area. So it's important. And for me, it was really important to attend to ask those questions from a planning perspective. I don't know if any of you have driven down either of the runways and hit the valve boxes or the manholes. And the planning is really important for us so that we are prepared when they come on and tear up a road that we can level out our valve boxes and manholes so that when you're driving, you don't have that little speed bump. And we always say that you can notice the tourists because they hit them, and people who are locals tend to go like this as they drive. And so for me, the question is, how are we going to be notified? How are we going to plan for this? How much time do we have? What's the feedback from the state? If something gets delayed or doesn't get passed so that we can ensure that we have the material to go in in the areas that they're improving that hit the city limits to ensure that we can fix those boxes? And unfortunately, the last time, there was some planning confusion. Mr. Weber did apologize, it didn't go as planned. But they ate through all of our meter boxes and our manhole lids. They bring in equipment that just literally tears that asphalt up, and, and that's it. The other questions that I asked pertain to the material. So when they tear up a road, they have material left over. But typically, the county has 100% access to, the TechSod is required to assist the counties. In the past, we've been able to work with the county to get some of that material because we can use it for patching. It's a free material as long as the county allows us to pick it up or gives us the authorization after they pick it up. There's some technicals in there. And but we've used it in the past for patching for our hot box. It's fairly decent asphalt, it's just TechSod's decided that they want to either repave or reseal coat. And so that gives us material at no cost. Whereas we budget annually between $25,000 and $50,000 for just hot, or hot patch mix. This would be something that we would have. So I did inquire about how we could get something like that to help out down the road, not only financially, but you know, for our roads, which is a priority with the city. And the last big side of this was, for me, was asking them the infrastructure bill that was passed in November of 2021, where is that money going to go and how does the city get ahold of some of it? It was very specific in the, the passing of the bill that there would be money available for rural areas, specifically roads. So for me, if they're putting together these plans and the, the plans have to be in place in order to get federal funding, what do we need to do to get that federal funding as well? Unfortunately, I was told that it was a great question, but they did not currently have an answer. But that if people provide feedback, which is provided in the commentary with a deadline of April 15th, that the state does have to come back and provide an answer. So I have submitted my inquiries as far as where's the money? How do we get to, you know, use it? What programs will be available? I did also inquire about, of course, the planning, notifications, things like that. But it's open to all of the residents of Alpine. And we made comments, you and I, about working closely with getting more of the information out with TechSod. I don't think very many people knew that they had public hearings. Unless you're an elected official and get personally invited, residents themselves, there wasn't a big spill on it. I know that they tried this hard to get the information out, so we wanted to work with them to get the information out, to get the public comments back. So the actual slide presentation that you guys have will be posted online for the residents to look at, as well as the, or they call them our fact sheets that provides kind of a summary of the program and then how to make your comments. From the city side, we're, we're really moving forward with those comments for the federal funding. We want to make sure that we don't miss that one opportunity or that one day that we didn't get something in in time because we weren't aware. It was a great conversation afterwards from a funding perspective of what's available through the state. They do have matching programs, which we're trying to, to utilize if available funds are available. So it was great to be able to say, hey, you know, we know this money's coming down. How do we stay on top of it? Who do we contact? We don't want to be that small town that didn't hire a really expensive contractor or grant manager. We just want to know what's the avenue we take. And so the first comment was to make our comments through the public comment because the state would have to come back and respond, or at least provide a direction. So that was exciting. And that's the shortest one yet.
Yes, it is. I've got a comment, going back to the utility. I did reach out to the residents of Texas. And he says that he wasn't too informed about it, but he says he does understand the big municipalities have filed lawsuits against the state. So he's supposed to get back with me to see what, whether add on that. So it wasn't the city, it was the governor that signed off on that. And so that takes a monkey off your reins. But I just want to let you all know that we are looking into that. I don't, I think it was kind of excessive, and especially on, you know, rural communities like us, you know, where there's limited income. So we'll see what happens. Maybe next meeting, we'll have some update on where we're at.
One comment on that, Mayor, is that we haven't paid the bill yet. Shut the gas off.
Right.
That should tell us something.
And that's what he said, that a lot of municipalities, we're not paying that bill. So we'll see what happens, okay? Let's move on, anything else, city updates?
There are no city staff updates at this time. The next meeting will be a full agenda.
Okay, we'll go to public hearings. And it's, let's see, public hearings obtained citizen views and comments regarding to... And it's, uh, let's see, public hearings obtained citizen views and comments regarding to, you know, an application for a special use permit for applicant Fong Hung To. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the purpose of establishing a coin operated machine business. The property in question is located nineteen oh six West Highway ninety. And the record, uh, property owner is Charles Sanders. Any comments on that? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, sorry. You have to come up to the podium, please.
And, uh, just state your name and address or name and ward for the record.
Uh, I'm Norma Olivo. And my ward is two. And, um, I'm, I'm here in behalf of Fong. To, and he, he did ask me if I could, his mom is sick, so he had to travel to Vietnam. But, um, he did ask me to see if y'all would consider him to open here on the west one nineteen oh six or whatever address I forgot. But, and he was asking, I know it's ten machines, twenty machines. I've been up here before. Um, but, you know, they pay for their, for their, their taxes, their permits and everything. The, um, so all that is paid. So it's not like they're just coming in or that he's coming in and just taking the money and running. He will, he will, he does put money into the, into Rooster County, into the city. So, and he was asking for more than ten machines, at least twenty, twenty-five machines. Six machines is not going to do anything. So, um, I don't know. Uh, I'm just hoping that you consider it and I know that you've had problems with these guys, with the other two. But I'm hoping that he is totally different than the, the ones that are here right now. And hopefully y'all will give him a chance. And that's, that's what he's asking for, just a chance to see if he can make it out here and y'all welcome him here to Alpine. So hopefully you, you decide not to deny him. It's, it's like opening another business and saying, you know, or a beauty salon and saying, well, just one chair, you know, that's it. You can't have two or three. You can't, you know, you can't survive like that. So I don't know. I'm just a little, it was, I forgot about the meeting, so I'm just throwing off things that I remember. But, uh, I hopefully y'all will consider and not, not deny him. So hopefully, I know the, the zoning committee, you know, they, they don't want him. But, I mean, we have the Legion. I know the Legion is nonprofit or whatever, you know, all this good stuff. But, uh, I think, I think they bring a little revenue into the, into Alpine. So hopefully.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the second item, public hearings obtained citizen views and comments regarding an application for a special use permit for applicant Chi Toy Bo. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the purpose of establishing a coin operated machine business. The property in question is located at two thousand east highway ninety. The property record is Limao Patel. Any comments on that? No one? Let's go, move on to the third one. Public hearing sustained the citizens' views and comments regarding a setback variance being requested by applicant Michelle Foster at twenty-one hundred West Highway ninety. The setback is requested to provide more efficient use of the land and to benefit the joint property owners and land users. Any comments? None? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. And its financial reports, department written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are routine and administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately. Unless requested by a council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence. After items not requiring separate discussion and then acted upon, the remaining items will be acted by one vote, city secretary.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have eight items on the consent agenda. First one is approval of March fourth, twenty twenty-two workshop meeting minutes. Second, approval of March tenth, twenty twenty-two workshop meeting minutes. Third, approval of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Fourth, approval of March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two special meeting minutes. Five, approval of the excused absence of Councilor Tandy for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting. Six, approval of director of finance job description. Seven, approval of lifeguards, one, two, and three job descriptions. And eight, approval of pool manager job description.
Okay.
I'd like to pull up six and seven, please.
Okay, six and seven. Okay. So anything else? Not entertain a motion to approve everything but six and seven. Okay, need a second. Okay, so been made in second, although any discussion? Oh, is in favor or every, every item except? Go back to item six and seven, councilman.
Um, I just had some questions on the compensation, Megan. Are they based on, off of T M L, what's, well, finance director?
So yes, um, comparable to our city size. Um, if you look at the bigger cities and the ones closer to, uh, urban areas, then they're not. But based on our population and our area, they are.
Okay, I just had that question because I just want, I, I know we're going to have a hard time trying to get somebody here. And on the lifeguard, I know we've had issues before, uh, as far as how much we're paying. Do you think that's going to be to get plenty of lifeguards or applicants?
I think it is. It's based off of the changes that were made last year, except for instead of, um, it was a little confusing to have a salary range. So we just went ten, eleven, twelve. Prior, it was nine twenty-five to nine fifty, nine seventy-five. So we went ahead and increased them accordingly to give them a little bit extra. And then the pool manager, um, which has already been approved, is, is higher as well.
Those were the questions I just.
And we, and then just so everyone's aware, you know, encourage your children and students to become lifeguards. This league does, um, but prior we didn't. But currently we do pay for their certification as well. And it's. We actually hire a third party to come in specifically to train our lifeguards.
How many will we be hiring?
We'd like to hire a minimum of twenty. Um, we do have to compete with Soul Rocks. Um, and the other areas that have lifeguard positions, um, but we also have to compete with high school programs, um, that football that comes in, you've got people leaving for college. Um, so if we can maintain at least fifteen through the summer, that would be good. But twenty is the ideal number. Because it is considered a part-time position.
Thank you.
Okay. So like to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the approval director finance job description and the approval of lifeguard one, two, and three job description.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, motion's laid second. Any discussion? Oh, is in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Okay, information or discussion items, we have none. Action items to be completed by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited to ten per meeting, city secretary.
Approve order twenty twenty-two oh four oh one in order of proving a contract for election services with Rooster County.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I remember.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Item two, city manager.
Your resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four dash oh one. A resolution authorizing the Parks and Recreation Board to make improvements to the dog park at Coconut Park.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four dash oh one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's made in second discussion.
I, I do want to make a comment and the chair is here, Mr. Darren, that um, the advisory boards are very specifically laid out in the ordinance as advisory. Um, they're not supposed to take on projects. The Parks Board is a very active, um, board. And I think it's important that they're willing to put in the time, the effort, the funds to improve, um, the dog park area. There is a little, um, drawing that was provided that shows you a shaded area for the dogs and some trees. Um, instead of just running with it, we wanted to make sure we took it before council, so council was aware that, that this isn't an additional add to our current budget. Um, they're doing this themselves. Um, I thought that was just very gracious of them. Um, Darren has done a lot of work with trying to coordinate with different, uh, groups. I believe he's trying to get the high school to help with some of the welding. Um, they're trying to get the materials donated. So there's nothing coming out of our current budget. And there's nothing, um, coming from our staff. Um, they'll help when needed. But this is something that they wanted to take on. And because they are an advisory board, we thought it best to come before council to get them that permission to move forward and to complete the project. Um, I'm just excited that they were as eager to make improvements.
Yeah, and I'd like to make a comment yesterday evening. I drove around the three main parks, veins, Medina and Coconut. And there was a lot of usage in the evening. So compliments, they're looking good. A lot of the, uh, equipment that's been added. So there was, it was plenty of people out there yesterday evening. So want to compliment you guys on that. Okay. Any more discussion? Oh, it's in favor, raise your right hand. It carries unanimously. Item three, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four dash oh two. A resolution moving the city council meeting from May third to May tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Motion?
I mean that we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four dash oh two.
Is there a second? Any discussion? And all those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay, let's go to item number four, city manager.
Approve an application for a special use permit for applicant Bo Hung To. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the purpose of establishing a coin operated machine business. The property in question is located at nineteen oh six West Highway ninety. The record property owner is Charles Sanders. The planning and zoning commission has recommended denial of this permit.
Okay, need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table out in four and five. And talking with G O today, we, we never approved ten machines. We didn't approve unlimited. That's hanging out there. I would like to get it at the next meeting to approve a number, some number, either unlimited ten, whatever we decide. And then put these back on and vote after we decide.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion on it? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, so we'll table items four and five for next meeting. Item number six, city manager.
Prove an application for a setback variance for applicant Michelle Foster at twenty-one hundred West Highway ninety. The setback is being requested to provide for more efficient use of the land and to benefit the adjoining owners and land users. The planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of this variance.
Okay, is there a motion?
I mean that we approve the application for setback variance for Michelle Foster at twenty-one hundred West Highway ninety.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion? Done. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Item number seven, city manager.
Approve interlocal agreement for the sharing of operations and maintenance costs of the health funders recycling center.
Okay, um, motion, please. Okay, you got a motion. Is there a second? Okay, motion made second discussion. See none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, item number eight, city manager.
Approved city of Alpine emergency operation plan.
Okay, need a motion?
I move that we approve the city of Alpine emergency operation.
Is there a second? Okay, got a couple of seconds. Although, any discussion?
I do want to point out in the emergency operation plan that there is a section that is not completed. Um, that would be the water and wastewater section. Um, after the events of last, actually twenty twenty, um, no, it was twenty twenty-one. Um, with the freeze and then the Senate coming down on the utilities. Um, Senate Bill three did require that the city be able to maintain certain P S I, certain notifications. Um, the outside engineers have been tasked with helping us put together something so that we can include it. Um, not only for the operation, uh, emergency operation of the, the departments, but for our emergency operation. Um, as a city as a whole. We wanted to get something presented and we've been talking about this since early last year. Um, we know that it's not a complete document, but we wanted to get something approved, knowing that we would be making constant updates and changes to it. So that as we go into the, the various weathers, um, our fire season is now started, we'll go back into fall. Um, that we have something in place so that if we reach out for FEMA grants, um, we're not scrambling, we've got something already prepared. So we know that we will have to bring it back before council to, to prepare the, or propose it again with changes. Um, this is the first emergency operation plan that the city has had independently. We still fall under the regional and the county one as well. Um, but we really wanted to a, address within our city. Um, there are some room for improvements. There always will be. Um, but we wanted to try and hit the basics for every department so that if something does happen, um, we have a clear line to go through FEMA for additional funds and support. So there is a pending section.
How long has it been since we contacted the engineer?
Um, they had a meeting, I believe, last week. Um, so they've got several presentations. Um, we were hoping to have had one presented to you guys already for the wastewater treatment plan. Um, due to scheduling, that's been postponed, but they've already completed several of the task items that we've asked them to do. It's just now giving them schedule to present to you guys for, for understanding in the pool of where we're at.
Does this also include on the generators for the wells?
So they have, um, that would be part of the emergency plan that we're required to do because of the, the Senate bill. Um, but we did ask them specifically to do a study on that, that they have, uh, come back with preliminary numbers to understand location, um, generator size and then possible costs. Um, that one was a very rushed. You would like to get it before council next meeting. Because April twenty ninth, we have a deadline, uh, for a possible grant. Um, the city has already put aside money for generators that we could use as part of the matching so that we don't have to pay the six, seven, eight hundred thousand, um, that it may take to get all these generators up and running. Um, so they got that one barely completed. Um, it needs to be reviewed. Um, I know Keith has been given a copy of it. I've been given a copy of it. It will get presented to council at the same time. We're going to ask for permission and your, um, approval to go out for the grant. Hopefully get it all taken care of and covered.
It's a great plan. I mean, at least we're moving forward with emergency plan, some kind of plan. Whereas before it was self-decelated. And now we're going to have a finalized plan on this, which is great. Okay, all those in, uh, any more questions?
Yes, on the emergency communication center, we haven't, it hasn't been used in, in probably years. Do we know if it is?
Is that with the?
Do we know, do we know, you know, is it the status of computers and emergency systems and all that? Is it?
It is not completely functional. Um, they are, Stephanie Elmore has been cleaning it up and going through and trying to see what needs to be updated, what needs to be replaced. I believe there's an internet connection issue. Um, it's also currently the housing. Location for Chillingwa EMS. Um, so they're, they're working on getting that cleaned up. So Stephanie does keep me. So they're, they're working on getting that cleaned up, so Stephanie does keep me in the loop.
We are having our meeting.
Yeah, we've had meetings there, it just needs to be cleaned up and they will need to purchase some new computers, they will need to.
So the checking of operational use will fall on, on the, on Stephanie?
So that, yeah, it is a county facility.
Should we maybe include that to, you know, to note that we will be keeping up with the operations of it? Or who is responsible for it?
We can add a section for that, yes. I would like to include that if they needed the city's help, that would be able to help. Maybe not be financial, but maybe staff.
Right. Yeah, just so that, you know, we know that it's being checked periodically, or you know, just so that we're not an oversight and then we find that we need it and it's not up and running. And then I just have another question, who makes the determination on using that plant? I mean, is it the mayor, is it, I mean, how does that get?
So Stephanie is our emergency management coordinator for this, for the county. The mayor represents the city and is the first EMC contact on behalf of the city. So the mayor, in a case of emergency, would reach out most likely to Judge Kano and then Judge Kano to Stephanie to be able to use that facility. I know we've used it in the past with the Zuzu Ver case, I think that may have been the last time we used it. And it was just, I think Darryl, no, actually Chief Scowen picked up the phone. But the mayor is our head EMC for our city.
It was, it was real good.
Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you all very much. Okay, city council comments, I'm gonna start on my left this time with Councilman Johnson.
I got a question for Megan, on this bid coming up for surplus, can city employees submit a bid?
Yes, they would have to register as a bidder.
Thank you. And I want to thank Darren Ness for all the work that he's been doing on the dog park, I know he's been working on that for a long time. And as well as, like you said, the city parks have been utilized, even the one in my neighborhood has been utilized and it's really good to see people outdoors and having a good time. So I want to thank Darren for doing all that work and the Parks Board as well.
He left, I'll tell him.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, no comment?
Oh, I have a comment. Thanks, Randy, glad you got recognized for something. Positive. Thanks to the dispatchers, I know what they're over there doing and they're the most collective people and you're not in the place and that's good, it's a good thing. Animal Patrol, we're all gonna need us. I did attend this tech talk meeting with Megan, Megan had questions that way over my head. It's very enlightening to sit with her. Supporting a meeting with Megan. And see Karen, they're gonna put gutters for rainwater.
You're gonna put rollouts down there?
Not yet. Maybe next meeting.
Like, that's it? I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening, really informative. And it was a short, sweet meeting, so we'll see y'all next, two weeks. Y'all have a good evening. Yeah.
As soon as you make a motion.
I make a motion going to executive pressure at
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all's in favor? Okay, unanimous, we're gonna take a quick break. If anybody needs it. And then that, we'll just continue with the meeting.
Tell you a funny story, I was reading.